Good evening. Is this, can you, is that good? Uh, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. It is six o'clock on June the fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty. We do have a quorum present, uh, so I will call us to order and I will ask Reverend Doug Wintermuth to come and give our invocation and then we'll do the pledges. We'll stand, please. Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this community. Help us to become a community, not only that cares, but a community that loves. Be with our leaders, give them discernment, give them wisdom, give them strength. May their character be infallible and may they lead this city in a direction that you would have it go. Forgive us when we fall short. Be ever near to us, be with those who are hurting today, those who are lonely. May we reach out to them in love and compassion. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. If you'll join me in the pledge, first of the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our next item is oath of office for our two council people that, uh, had the election. So if Councilman, uh, Rob Goen will come to the front and Council Lady Mindy Galluck. We will, I'll read you the oath of, oath of office. Swear you back in for two more years. Yeah, that's good enough. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I will repeat after you.
Yeah, but you can pronounce your last name correctly, okay? Okay. In the name and by the, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority, authority of the state of Texas.
I.
I, Mindy Gallack.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For the city of Jacksonville.
City of Jacksonville.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do my best.
And will do my best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
To preserve.
To preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the constitution.
And defend the constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good. Thank you. Do we shake hands?
Yes.
Let me see where she read from.
Oh, she didn't read.
I know, you did. Let me see it up close.
Okay, here.
That's a lot.
It is. All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. In the name.
In the name.
And by the authority of the state of Texas.
And by the authority of the state of Texas.
I.
I, Rob Goen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For the city of Jacksonville.
For the city of Jacksonville.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitution and laws.
The constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're sworn in, sworn back in.
Sworn back in. While I'm down here, can I do that? Uh, if Doug Wintermuth would please come forward. Might need to pray again. You have been a wonderful asset to our community. You've been a great friend to the city and we realize this is probably your last gig as far as being a citizen of Jacksonville. So I wanted to give you a recognition from the, from, uh, our city. And it says, whereas Reverend Doug Wintermuth has served as lead pastor at the First United Methodist Church here in Jacksonville since 2015. And whereas Reverend Wintermuth is a member of several organizations such as Kiwanis, board member of Hope and Lakeview Methodist Conference Center. And whereas he is given of his time in performing with a guitar at local nursing homes weekly, blessing those people. And whereas he has served as past president and member of the ministerial alliance. Whereas Reverend Wintermuth has competed in the Tomato Fest fishing tournament and won the Tomato Fest dice cooking competition. Now therefore, I, Randy Gore-Mayer, the city of Jacksonville, do hereby recognize and express the community's gratitude for Reverend Doug Wintermuth and extend to him our deepest appreciation for all of his dedicated work in our community and wish him the best in all of his future endeavors. Signed this the fourteenth day of June, 2022, by Randy Gore-Mayer. And we really appreciate that. We hate to lose you. We hate to lose you, but Huntsville's getting a good man. I understand, but here, there you go. We wanted to recognize you.
Thank you.
You bet. Do I have anything else down here?
Uh, the budget awards.
The GFOA award, my cohort in crime, Roxanna, if you'll come forward. Yeah, and then Jette. I'm just getting my stuff out of the way. If that's okay. Roxanna, for, uh, I think everybody knows she's our finance, finance officer, has been for quite some time. She does an excellent job. She goes above and beyond during the budgetary process, uh, and participates in the GFOA award, which is a Government Finance Officers Association. Is, this is a distinguished budget presentation award presented to the city of Jacksonville, Texas, for the, for the fiscal year beginning October one, 2021. And I think you've won this for six, six years in a row. So our finances are in great shape. She does us a wonderful job and we're thrilled and very fortunate to have a person as in her caliber to take care of our finances. So here you go, Ms. Roxanna. You bet. Now we'll go to, uh, Sherry. Thank you.
Good evening. I am the representative of Jetco and associate partner of Technor Color. And I want to invite Mr. Wells and Abby of yours. Several years ago, Jetco hosted a visioning session with the board of directors. They determined your near-term goals for our organization. And we determined that nurturing and sustaining businesses was the top of our priorities. And what we do that is we build relationships and we show efficiency. So we would like to show our appreciation to Technor Color for being in Jacksonville. They have, um, about a dozen locations in the United States. They also have some in Europe and Asia. And, um, I wanted Mr. Wells to tell you, he's only been here since, uh, for about ten months as the plant manager. But I wanted him to tell you just very briefly like what the company produces.
All right, uh, good evening to everybody. Uh, like you said, I've been here about ten months as the plant manager. And, uh, basically, uh, Technor Color, what we do, uh, we produce, uh, color concentrate for the plastic industry. So people always ask, what is that and what do you do? Uh, and how do you bake it? Uh, and ba- basically I tell people all the time, it's almost like baking a cake. Uh, when you bake the cake, you weigh up ingredients, you mix it, and you cook it. It's pretty much the same thing we do with our color concentrate. We weigh it up, we mix it, then we cook it. But the only way we cook it, we cook it through an extruder process. So that's kind of basically what we do. And we send that, we take that color and we send it to other color houses that do in Jackson mode and actually make parts, uh, whether it's in the wiring tape industry, the building industry, safety, medical, uh, consumer goods, pretty much any industry out there, we can send our color to. So that's kind of what we do.
Um, Mr. Wells attended a workshop that we held recently on employee engagement. And I was very impressed that he is committed to growing the company culture at Techno Color. And we look forward to the company flourishing under his direction. Let me award you the June Employer of the Month.
Thank you. Our, uh, next presentation, special presentation will be made by Police Chief Joe Williams. Chief, if you want to come forward, it'd be great.
One of the most favorite things I get to do is, uh, recognize police officers for their efforts. Whether it's, uh, fight crime, uh, facing violent felons or actually saving lives. Once again, we're here, this is the second month in a row that we're, uh, awarding the life-saving award bar to one of our police officers. So we'll tell you what happened. So on May fifteenth at about four thirty P M., at that same exact time, there was no one nine-one-one service in Cherokee County anyway. It was a massive failure. Someone got injured in the, in the area of Canada and Artist Street and was bleeding profusely. Uh, the homeowner had called nine-one-one and it failed. It rolled over. Anderson County finally got it, but the response from police and fire and EMS was severely delayed. He's driving to work at four thirty in the afternoon and for a shift change at five o'clock, he gets flagged down by this lady in the road. Stops, pulls over, assesses what's going on. He's got a tourniquet on his belt. He applied that one. Uh, eventually went and got another one out of his car, applied a second one. And there's absolutely no doubt that his efforts saved that man's life. And for that, he's going to get the life-saving award bar. Also Noah Acker has earned the life-saving award bar for outstanding performance on May fifteenth, 2022, that directly saved the life of an injured person. I'm pretty proud of him.
You bet. Thank you. Those are great, great presentations. You want to, we can talk about six here now.
Yes. Mayor, city council, before we hop into citizen participation, I do want to make note that item six on your agenda, election of Mayor Protem was intentionally skipped this evening. Uh, that action is specified by the charter to take place immediately following a May oral election.
Correct.
And May's election cycle did not include that, so we'll be skipping that this evening.
Okay. Thank you, James. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is the time where we set aside to hear from a concerned citizen to come and address the council. If you have a concern that you'd like for us to know about, we ask you that you limit your comments to three minutes about. And we have one that has signed up tonight, Jackie Ross. So if Jack, oh, there you are. Great. If you'll come to the podium, state your name. And then, uh, I'll turn my clock on and I know you'll keep it around three minutes. So thank you.
Jackie Ross from eighty-seven Circle Drive.
Okay.
And my problem is the trees in my neighborhood. I have a real big yard and it connects with about eight houses. And the trees from my neighbors is growing over, they planted right on the line. And it grows over on that little ragged fence man, which was supposed to be replaced. And, um, I just, I'm spending all my money cutting trees and having them hold out. And the back part I thought was, it was yours, but it's an alley going through there. And it's a lot of trees on my business on the avenue. And the man next door, his trees is on my house. And he planted, he planted them there on purpose. I know to get next to me, but I wanted to cut them, but I want to ask, how can I cut them without getting in trouble?
I see. Okay.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for, uh, bringing this to our attention. We'll get somebody to get in contact with you. Yes, ma'am.
And they nail pallets on my fence instead of buying a board and replacing it where their dogs tow up my fence. They nail pallets on my fence.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. You bet. That's all that signed. That, was there anyone else that wanted to address the council during this time? Come on. You hadn't, you hadn't spent all three minutes yet.
When I, uh, when I was calling, I was asking me and Nellin to parrot it. I called Judge Wallace and he told me to call the code enforcer.
Okay.
Well, I called the code enforcer and he said, call Judge Wallace.
Okay. All right. We'll see if we can figure that out and get back with you. Thank you.
We got a phone number.
Yeah, we got a phone number.
All right.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. If not, uh, we will go to our, uh, number, item number nine is our consent agenda, which, uh, requires little or no deliberations by the council. We've got approval of the minutes and then we're reappointing, reappointing one, two, three, people to serve on our Jetco board that came up for reelection. So I will entertain a motion on that.
I may, oh, excuse me. I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Council Lady Mindy Gallack, seconded by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number ten, we have no action out of executive session. We'll go to eleven, discuss and consider with possible action a resolution, by the city council of Jacksonville, Texas, authorizing publication of a notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation in connection with receipt of financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board. So, Mr. James, if you'll.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. Items eleven and twelve on your agenda, uh, deal with the same notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation. The first is related to the Texas Water Development Board project. We've been working on this for some time. And at the April twelfth city council meeting, the city council did approve a resolution formally seeking assistance from the Texas Water Development Board for a sanitary sewer line replacement and extension, generally stemming from South Bolton, east across U S sixty-nine and just east of Tally Nichols Park. This will solve some known deficiencies in the system. It will also replace a, uh, large sanitary sewer lift station, uh, close to the lake on Lake Shore Drive. Uh, this is about a five point seven million dollar project. You'll see here, uh, the estimated project timeline. Again, this is just a notice of intention. These COs will be purchased by the Texas Water Development Board in the form of their assistance is servicing or issuing the debt at a two percent interest rate. Closing date expected in August and end of construction not expected till July of twenty twenty-five. So this is a very long project. It's almost two miles of eighteen inch pipe easement and property acquisitions, uh, to get done, design, environmental. A lot of steps ahead of us, but a, a great step and a large step in the right direction. You do see kind of some of the terms there, the two percent for twenty years. Uh, the project proceeds will be about five point seven million dollars. And this project's being designed by Stokes and Associates out of Henderson, Texas.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion, uh, to act on that resolution.
I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution.
Okay. We have a motion, but Councilman Tim McRae. Second by Mayor Protem Rob Goen. Any discussion needed? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twelve is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution by the city council authorizing publication of notice of intent to issue said certificates of obligation.
Yes, Mayor, City Council. As you'll recall, last fall, fall of twenty twenty-one, the city had issued a notice of intent to sell roughly ten million dollars of COs. We pressed pause on that to give staff a little bit more time and to get into this budget cycle. Of course, we had a, a leadership transition and so I do appreciate that time. What this is, is this kind of tees up potentially the issuance of some COs to generate about four point six million dollars for the capital improvement plan that we'll be developing as part of this year's budget. Again, this is notice of intent. There is no, um, binding, uh, nature of this. These COs would be issued in August as well. And between now and then, we'll be working on a C I P and, and working up the budget process. Uh, this would allow us to adjust the I N S rate as necessary as part of this upcoming fiscal year. And so from our bond council and our financial advisors, Hilltop Security, uh, this is a, a good time to make this step.
Right. Okay. And a C I P is capital improvement plan.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you. So generally, if these were to be issued, these would be for streets, water and sewer and ancillary structures, sidewalks, lighting, things of that nature.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion on that resolution also.
I'll make the motion that we approve a resolution.
Okay.
To intish, issue these certificates of obligation.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen, Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion we need on that one?
Uh, these are, is that a street plan? Is that kind of the baseline?
This will be, this will be the funds that we would use to attack the robotics assessment on streets.
Exactly.
Yep.
And one of the reasons we've delayed these, the street so far was, what's the condition of the pipes underneath it? What's the condition of?
Right.
All the stuff that's underneath the streets rather than going in willy-nilly, paving streets and.
Yeah. And then they fail again because of.
And we had a street study done.
Correct.
To document where we need the most work.
Right.
What's an overlay? What's a complete rebuild, that kind of stuff?
Exactly.
We've tried to mitigate spending money where we didn't have to spend it right this minute until we knew exactly what we were working with. So, cool.
Okay. We have a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number thirteen is to discuss and consider with possible action a resolution suspending Encore's requested rate increase for ninety days.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this seems to be something we revisit, uh, pretty regularly, but we are, um, asking council to consider this resolution to suspend Encore's requested rate increase for the next ninety days. They have made a request to increase the rates by four point five percent, which would generate approximately an additional two hundred and fifty million dollars to Encore. Of course, not just from Jacksonville, but throughout their entire system.
Very good. So, uh, I'll entertain a.
Hubert will make the motion using interpretive dance.
So I'll, I'll entertain a motion on that and then we can discuss.
I'll make a motion to pass a resolution suspending Encore's requested rate increase for ninety days.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallack. Any discussion that we need to have? And we're just kicking the candy on the road, I think is what we're doing.
Yep.
If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fourteen is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance regulating garage sales.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this is an ordinance to regulate garage sales, estate sales and occasional sales in the residential areas, uh, of Jacksonville. You'll see one of our, uh, kind of core commitments to the communities to strengthen our neighborhoods. Two point one being code compliance and updates. And, um, certainly two point four, preserve and revitalize our existing neighborhoods. And so this is an effort to make sure that we, uh, maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods by reducing or, uh, further limiting, uh, garage sales and estate sales taking place. They generate undue traffic and typically unsightly goods being sold. Uh, and so this ordinance would limit those sales to one per six months or two per year. Anytime you conduct more than two on the same property in a year, you actually have to collect sales tax as well. So it becomes the state comptroller issue. Uh, this is very common for cities to reduce them to two. They are allowed to be a three-day period though. So you could have like a Friday, Saturday, Sunday sale and you could do two of those per year.
Okay.
And I will say that this is at really the request of our code enforcement officers. Of course, as they're driving through communities and, and responding to calls for service, this has been something brought to their attention and they proactively said, you know, we need to get something on the books to make sure we can satisfy the requests of our citizens.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, we, uh, pass an ordinance regulating garage sales as presented by our city manager.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Any discussion? Do we have a, just question? Do we have a garage sale ordinance now?
We currently do not.
We do not.
No.
So you could have one, one a month, once a month.
Yeah, and there's some that are basically ongoing Monday through Friday. They're almost like a home-based business.
Exactly. Okay.
I can think of a couple of them.
Oh, I can too.
In the Eastside School area that there's always a garage sale going.
Right. Exactly. Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fifteen is to discuss and consider with possible action a non-standard service agreement with Craft Turney Water Supply.
I did not catch it if we didn't. Did we get a second on that, on that motion?
We did.
We did.
Thank you. Fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Did you read the caption?
I did.
All right. Thank you. Uh, item number fifteen on the agenda, Mayor, City Council, is for a non-standard service agreement with Craft Turney. Craft Turney will be responsible for providing water to the lots that were recently approved by the voters for sale, uh, south of the Lake Jacksonville Dam. The cost to extend the water surface, uh, service, excuse me, is roughly fifty thousand dollars at forty-nine, nine, fifty, pending, uh, the city attorney's review and some amendments to a few of the documents we are asking city council approval.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion and then we can discuss.
I'll make a motion, we approve the non-standard service agreement with Craft Turney Water Supply.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallack.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion that we need? Do you think they're fairly firm on the forty-nine, nine, fifty?
I do believe so. It's an estimate of two thousand linear feet of four-inch pipe with, uh, several case borings under some of the county roads. Uh, they've adjusted it three, two or three times now based on when we first requested it. This number was revised as recently as about five days ago and it's held for fourteen days. So we're trying to, trying to move.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number sixteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approving an application submitted for a replat of lots one and two, block one of the Antler subdivision to the city of Jacksonville located at the corner of Bonner and Zimmerman Drive.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I think this is certainly a win for this neighborhood. Uh, January eleventh of this year, city council did approve a rezoning of this property from K Industrial to A Single Family. So it went from a pretty high intense use, you know, you could have a metal building there with machinery and, and quite a few employees, uh, to our least intense zoning classification or single family. And you'll note that the area generally to the west, north and south of this is single-family residential. And the developer or property owner has submitted this replat, which was approved by P and Z at the May fourth meeting to go from two lots to eight lots. I'll say that this does meet the plating requirements and, uh, minimum lot size in this zoning district is around six thousand or is six thousand square feet. And the minimum lot as provided on this plat is, uh, over eight thousand square feet. So it looks like a, a nice layout.
Good. Very good. I'll, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion, we approve the application submitted for a replat of lots one and two, block one of the Antler subdivision.
Have a motion by Mayor Protem Rob Goen. Second by Councilman Hubert Robinson. Uh, any discussion? I think this is right next door to Trinity Assisted Living in the new Wascheteria. I'm at the same proximity of where that is. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number seventeen, open forum for mayor and council. Anybody have anything they want to talk about?
I'd like to commend our emergency personnel for the fires on Sunday and especially the fire department. I thought that was, in the community as a whole, that was really, really something to see how they really worked and tirelessly. And, um, to get those under control. So I really think they should be commended.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause we, we, I know my husband and I commented that here we were sitting in our nice little, you know, seventy-one degree, you know, living room, taking a nap and the firemen were there and they're loaded down on their equipment and all that. I mean, and how, how did they manage? I, I don't know. It's.
Could one of them tell us? I wonder how hot that is when they're battling a fire like that? And, I mean, what is the temperature that they're even, they're dealing with?
Yeah.
I mean, the temperature was probably ninety, ninety-seven, ninety-eight throughout the whole day. But the temperature was probably about a hundred and ten. You know, once you put on that gear, you're, you know, you're just holding in that heat in your body. So, I mean, I'm just looking it up, it was a hundred thirty, a hundred forty degrees. I mean, just, just a guess.
Sure.
I don't know that for sure, but.
Yeah.
Those guys were horrible. But, like you said, uh, Mr. McRae, we couldn't have done it without the city's help and the citizens of this town. It was amazing to see that, um, the volunteer fire departments that showed up and then just the citizens bringing water. and then just the citizens drinking water. Our guys had to cycle in and out with the volunteer fire departments, and there was so much water, so much gay raid snacks. And that was able to refill, refuel the ones that we rehabbed so they could get back to work after a few minutes of rest. So we can't do that on our own. We really can't. So we wouldn't have been able to do that, that hard of a fire without the citizens and the citizens. So we thank y'all for that.
You bet. Yeah, I was there at one point. Alicia said, I think we're going to have to get the word out that we have plenty. We got, we've got plenty.
It'll just go to the next one.
Right.
And so it doesn't go away, for sure. You know, you go to the next one or the next demand we have. So, you know, that's, we're just, we're indebted to support the city's willingness.
You bet. Yeah.
Thank you.
Bet. And I'd like, I mean, it was the day after an absolute successful tomato fest, and I think we already give props to the chamber, Peggy, for putting that together. She said there was over 250 vendors this year. The crowd was amazing. I spoke to a new trailer, food trailer that was there, and asked her, was it worth her time? And she said it absolutely was, that what she sold was just a small amount short of what the same product that she sold at the Red Dirt Festival in Tyler. So her sales here were very, very comparable to the one in Tyler. So she was thrilled that she came. So it was a great event, it really was. And they do a lot of work for that. And I talked to some of the retail outlets downtown. Of course, they said with the heat, if you had AC that you could offer, they got some additional sales there. But it's just not the vendors at the tomato fest that realize profit from that. But it's the whole community, and I think that's great. Anybody else? If not, Mr. City Manager, report?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I'd like to begin by welcoming Renissa Wade. She's our new assistant city manager. She joins us, I think it's last Monday, and then I left for a conference on Wednesday. So she got thrown to the fire right away, but she joins us with over 24 years of experience with the city of Tyler, and just really glad to have her on the team. So she's here at City Hall, so I welcome or invite people to come on by. We're open door policy around here, and we love when people stop by to visit with us and catch up. So welcome, Renissa. You're welcome. Jumping right in, of course, I don't want to belabor the point, but thank God for our firefighters and everyone who responded to Sunday afternoon's events. There were two, a smaller structure fire started across the street on Austin Street from the primary fire there at 540 El Paso Street. But again, just want to reiterate what our fire marshal stated, that really it was the community that came out and made, and made it to be as successful, as successful as possible in terms of keeping people safe. We had both of our hospitals right there beside us. They staged additional ambulances. We had several just, it was really just a battle against the heat as I was there. I mean, we had multiple just spectators falling out with heat exhaustion or, or heat-related fatigue. We made a, made a call, and not 10 minutes later, we had 40 burgers from Whataburger donated, and then not only donated, but delivered to the scene. So our businesses come through, small and large alike. We had a lot of police officers there. It was a big area to contain and appreciate Chief Williams and his crew being there. We had our parks team bring in fuel and filling up engines so they could maintain running into the evening hours, both from the BFDs and our own city trucks and our public and community services. They're always behind the scenes, monitoring the water system, pushing additional water from the towers and from the plant and through the different above-ground storage tanks to that area to maintain pressure, not only to fight the fire, but also for the residential customers in the area. We had seven different fire agencies in addition to our own Jacksonville Fire Department. That's amazing to see. Rusk Fire Department, Gallatin, Maydell, North Cherokee, Earl's Chapel, Recklaw, and Smith County. So big props to all of those, those guys. Of course, we did have some injuries. We had one firefighter in the hospital until this afternoon. He was released and he is home and doing better. But he did have some relatively serious injuries, not directly related to the fire itself. But more, more heat-induced, I would probably, heat and stress-induced. Moving on, Mayor, he stole my thunder, tomato fest. Unfortunately, I had to be out of town. Yeah, I had to be out of town for it, but I heard it was amazing. I heard it was the biggest ever potentially. Renissa, I know, got to experience it, I think, for the first time. Big thanks to, again, the chamber and really good coordination with city staff this year. I think Peggy and her crew really outlined what we needed to do. We did the, did what we were asked to do, and it, and it went off. So appreciate that. We are still working toward Jacksonville's 150th birthday celebration on October 22nd. We've had some really special events lately, so keep, keep in touch with our Facebook. If you missed Flag Day and the Time Capsule opening, you missed two really special events. There was also Memorial Day event in Hazel-Tilton Park. So those kind of really small niche events are what build community, and so we want to see those continue to grow. They're really, really something special. But October 22nd, I have no doubt that that will be, that will, that'll be the cherry on top, so to speak, for the year in terms of events. We've had a lot of meetings. In fact, we have one tomorrow to continue the planning efforts related to that. And it is budget season, so we're working hard as a staff to start to prepare the budget to make sure we can get some of the wants and as many of the needs as possible met in this community. We will be working closely with our communication team to put out a lot of informational videos related to taxing entities, appraisals, tax rates, and then the things that are in the budget. We want people to know what we're working toward next year and look for opportunities to engage the public. So we'll have a special kind of budget strategy in terms of communication and looking forward to that. I think that was, that was it. Yeah.
Okay.
Sheriff Dixon, thank you for joining us tonight.
Yes, yeah.
I didn't see you until we got going.
Exactly. Thank you for coming. But with that, it is...